Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the work session for Monday, March 8. Thank you for joining us either in the Zoom room or online or on the television station. We will go ahead and work through today's agenda, but I do want to note, a couple of the council members have requested excused absences for tonight, but unfortunately, we don't have a quorum. So we will not be able to call the meeting to order. I believe Ms. Ferguson, correct me if I'm wrong, but without three members here, we'll just have an informational meeting where we can still move through the agenda. We just won't vote on anything.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And so with that, we do have the approval of the agenda. But again, it will have to be an informational meeting since we don't have a quorum to go through that procedure. And by the same token, we did have the minutes prepared for tonight, but we'll have to table that until the April meeting. We didn't have any items listed under old business, but wanted to step through a couple of things, beginning with the appointment of supervisors for the elections. So Ms. Diane or Mr. Tenelli, did you all want to share some information on where we are with that?
I can. In 2017, we had a slate of supervisors of elections appointed, and it can be renewed every two, every two years on odd year. If it doesn't get renewed, the current slate automatically carries over. And we did have, the charter says a minimum of three, but the last full election, we had, I believe, eight members. So we can have, so we can do them in shifts. We contacted those and six of the eight members have agreed or are available to serve again for the upcoming election. Again, I guess this is an informational piece, but we do have six residents interested in being supervisors of elections for the October 4th election.
Thank you, Mr. Tenelli, for that update. And then just want to make sure with Ms. Ferguson, our attorney being on. So as Mr. Tenelli was saying, this group was approved, I think he said in 2017, and it gets renewed every two years, which would have been 2019. And the current group stayed on, is my recollection. I believe that was our first time using the electronic machines as well in that election. So they have already been trained on how to operate that equipment. And from what I've heard, it went pretty seamlessly. So I think it's great to have that continuity there, that they'll be able to just get a refresher on the electronic systems to be able to move through the election for all the candidates this coming year. And Ms. Ferguson, I wanted to ask, kind of rambled there, but in terms of our charter and what it states, because it just carries over if we don't vote to approve a new board of supervisors, do we still need a vote on this group? Or is it just understood, because I know, for instance, one of our residents passed away, who served, I think it was back, you know, some years ago. So does the council have anything physically that we need to do with these individuals that are listed here?
Since a vote hasn't taken place so far to replace them, they continue to serve in that position until they are replaced. You should go ahead and do that and follow your schedule that's in the charter. But failing to do that doesn't mean that you can't have an election. It's more important to have the election. So the supervisors continue in their jobs, in their appointments until they're replaced.
Perfect.
If they're willing to.
Yes, we can't force them. Great, thank you so much for that. Councilmember Mendoza or for the rest of the team, are there any other questions about this?
No.
Okay, great. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Hall for an update related to some of our streets and WSSC work.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council staff. Yeah, I'm gladly to notify the mayor, council and residents and staff that WSSC has finally finished their underground water main project. And now they're on phase one of the milling and overland. And on the milling and overland will start on Barnum, which, which has already been completed on Barnum Street in the 54, I mean 5100 block to the 5400 block, and also completed on Volta Avenue. The next phase should be on 56th Avenue and the 4200 block of 56th Avenue. And on Wednesday, I think Wednesday or Thursday, they will be completing Tilden Road. And next week, we will have some more updates, and we will notify the residents with the no parking signs and also the door hangers. During this phase of work and scope of work, no water interruption for any water supply should be interrupted at any time.
I'm just trying to put my last minute slide, but anyway.
I'm sorry, Mr. Small, could you please mute? I'm sorry, we can.
I apologize, sorry.
That's okay, it's okay. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Hall, sorry about that.
Okay, and as I was saying, it should not interrupt with any water supply coming to any, anyone's home. And if you do have a problem on your door hangers, that should be issued out to you, or you may have already received it, is a contact number for a WSSC representative that will follow up with any concerns or any issue during this phase of work. And that should be the end of, end of that project right at the moment. As, as I say, we will, they will notify you when they in your area or on your street, 48 hours prior to doing any work or anything like that.
And just to add a note, they did complete Upstate Street today with the milling, and they did complete the 4200 block of 56, like Mr. Hall alluded to earlier. So those two sections have been completed as of today.
So they're really moving, making some good progress, and the weather seems to be cooperating too. So that, I'm sure, is helping us as well to get this done finally. But I do appreciate that update, Mr. Hall, and to our residents who've been impacted. While, yes, we love the infrastructure improvements that are happening, we can't ignore the fact that it has been a tremendous inconvenience to you all, and just sincerely appreciate your patience as we've gone through this. I think it started back in 2018. Yeah, so you all are superstars. Thank you to our residents who have been patient throughout this process. The next item.
Mayor.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I got to go real quick. While, while WSSC has a contractor doing the milling and resurfacing, and we also have our own contractor working on 58th Avenue. Colonel and I are talking, maybe we need to approach them and see what other work is needed around town. So we don't have to pay another mobilization, see what kind of pricing we can get for some minor repairs, because we have the state highway money. But, you know, if it goes above $10,000, obviously, yes, go into a big format, but. So, like, but if they use a county pricing and who's ever available, could we tackle onto that pricing, not have to go through a big process? I'm just thinking down the road, you know, since we have two asphalt contractors working in town.
Mrs. Ferguson, could you answer that question for us from the legal standpoint?
We did change that so that you could, what they call piggybacking, onto.
Right, right.
Another towns, another government, you could, what's called piggybacking, onto.
Right, right.
I seem to be echoing there, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let me see if I can help. Someone is unmuted.
It will identify some projects and, and, you know, while they're here, you know, if they stop at like, this street and skip over here, you know, can they, you know, go ahead and do this area? So it's a continuous, I'm just saying, just in case, so. But we'll bring that back, you know, because it would be nice not to pay for the mobilization, demobilization for contractors, they're already here, so.
And one thing is, and it may already be on Mr. Hall's list, but I know on 57th, because it is such a high-traffic area, there's some areas of concern over there. It's just, it's one of the main areas or arteries and arteries into the town, if you will. So hopefully, that area will be up for consideration. But again, Mr. Hall, definitely appreciate you working with WSSC and Code Enforcement Officer Reinhardt, because it has been a long process. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. 57th Avenue is going to be a little bigger project that will have to be visited out, and I think we was going to try to put that in the upcoming, next grant that we get from the CBCDG. I'm sorry.
It's a lot of alphabet soup, right? But yeah, good point. Thank you for mentioning that. Any other comments or questions related to that item? Okay, so we will come back. I, or actually, let me just pause. Mrs. Rigby, are you on the line or anyone from State Highway, Maryland Department of Transportation? Okay, so she may not be on yet. So we will jump down to our other guest of honor, which is Mr. Daryl Small. The residents who are on may not all recognize him, but to those who were impacted by the September 10 flash flood, you will most certainly remember Mr. Small, as he was out here assisting with that as we were trying to assess damage, or mainly the staff assessing the damage along with residents. And then, again, a few weeks later, when we had a car impact one of our condo buildings, again, OEM was deployed with other county resources. And so wanted to invite him out to share some updates with the community in terms of things that have done, been done or accomplished since September 10. We had that experience, so, you know, if there's things that you all, Mr. Small, have done or can share with the town as we prepare. Spring is upon us, just a few weeks away, which means April showers bring May flowers. And so knowing there should be some significant rainfall, we don't want to be caught off guard, similar to what happened last time. So wanted to hear, again, what projects have been completed, and then hopefully, some ideas that we can brainstorm on working together for the benefit of our residents to reduce as much as possible any future flooding in the town. So we'll turn it over to you at this time.
Yeah. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you, Mayor James, for this opportunity. I was, and I apologize if the light goes off in the background. It has to have continuous motion, so it may go out, but I'm still here. For the past several months, I've been working at a vaccination site. We've been able to, we've been, the county has been able to stand up four, now five sites, and my primary role has been to go to those facilities and make sure that our emergency plan is in place. And so this is really my first time back in the, in the building. But once again, I want to thank you for the opportunity, and at the same time, I want to be respectful of the time that you have given me. I'm hopeful that I can share my screen. I would like to, one, provide you with an update based off of, as of today, the latest status regarding the homes that were impacted by the September 10 flood. But also, I'd like to also take advantage of the opportunity to talk about some future projects and the possibility of partnering with Bladensburg for grant opportunities to do this. So with that being said, I hope to have permission or able to share, share my screen or.
Yeah, so you should be able to share your screen now. Our videographer just gave you, I think, the ability to do so.
Great.
Do you see at the bottom, sort of center of the screen, it says, share screen in green?
Yes.
Okay, and you can take it from there.
Okay, one moment, I'm thinking, did I just lose you? I don't think.
We're here, we see, it's your inbox, though. Okay, now we see PowerPoint.
Awesome, okay, thank you very much. Yeah, because, okay, so if you don't mind, real quickly, and this is just an eye chart here, not for, it's too small for you to read, but I want to just highlight, we were tracking 45 properties, if you will, that requested, I'll say it like this, that requested some type of follow-up assistance, assistance after the flood. Out of those 45, as of today, we really, the number has slightly changed. We show 18 open, but that number is now reduced to 15, if I'm not mistaken. And we had 45, I mean, 27 that were complete. I highlighted the two at the top, Bladensburg, and I'll come back to that in a moment, as well as the three at the bottom that were completed. What type of work was being performed was basically muck, what they could refer to as muck out, drywalling, and those, there were some property that required some extensive repairs that we are still in the process of addressing. Going to the next slide real quick, that'll give you a little bit better view. Once again, I wanted to highlight, out of the five properties that were, that needed, that requested some type of follow-up assistance, the five, the five that are shown, two are currently still pending open, and that's requiring some type of follow-up, be it the muck out or rebuild, particularly the one on Newton, says unassigned but closed. But actually, I received a little bit update as of today, and let me just quickly see if I could go to that. And I apologize, this is a little bit too small to read, but I just wanted to at least provide you with a tracking mechanism that we've been using to engage. Maryland VoAd, if you will, that's the Maryland Volunteer Organization, Active in Disaster. They have been the lead on working with volunteers to help with these repairs. I sit, I serve on the, what's called the Unmet Needs Committee with the VoAd. And recently, I said recently, less than about three or four weeks ago, we were awarded a $10,000 grant to help address some of these repairs. Keep in mind that all of the repairs are basically, are done by volunteers, not, not untrained volunteers, but licensed volunteers to do the work. And so with that being said, as you can see at the very top, there is one of the Bladensburg properties that are still open for repairs, particularly the external doors, laundry, room sink and cabinets. From my understanding, as of today, the heat and the water heater has been restored by one of the volunteer organizations. The other, which at one point, there was two items, they were still open, but now we're down to one. And so this is an ongoing effort. Unfortunately, due to the COVID-19, repairs have slowed down tremendously because of people going into homes. And that's, that's understandable in terms of what volunteers. We've had a slow in the, in the progress for its repairs do slow solely because of that. So that's what I currently have, Mayor James, for is an update on the repairs. Keeping in mind that, I don't want to be respectful in how I say this, we want to learn from what happened with this flood. But not only learn from it, but we want to see if, and this is going to lead into a follow-on piece to this presentation. We would love to engage the city of Bladensburg to be a, to become one of our pilot studies or case study for a future grant. Grant, as we refer to it, as a BRIC grant, which is building infrastructure and community resilience. That's what BRIC is for. And FEMA has introduced this as a way to help strengthen both infrastructure and community resilience within communities that have been impacted or have been influenced by a major disaster and have received some type of declaration. Whether you receive that declaration or not, you still, if you've been impacted by a disaster, you can qualify for these particular grants. And I'd like to share briefly about what that is about as we talk about going into the next season, that is getting ready to go into the March, the winter season, the windy season, but also piggybacking off of what we learned from this, this impact. So with that being said, and I would like to move to the next slide, subject to any questions regarding what I've already covered for as the status.
Mr. Small, thank you for recapping where we started in terms of the homes that were impacted, the count, and then where we are currently. With the home that is still listed in here, I just want to make sure I'm clear, because I've been in touch with some of the affected individuals. Is this for one of the single-family homes?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I think I know which one then. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because some were condominiums, and those, the work should be near completion as of over this past weekend. So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was on the same page with you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Mendoza or staff, any questions for Mr. Small so far? Because I know Officer Reinhardt was definitely involved, Mr. Tenelli was involved getting out there, Mr. Hall, so feel free to jump in. Okay, all right, Mr. Small, back over to you, sir.
Okay, okay, and thank you once again. Real quick, I would go through these slides pretty quickly, once again, to stay within the time that's been given. What you see there is the Prince George County Community Lifelines, and lifelines are common. This is what, this is, if you will, the federal agency way of rolling out capabilities and how we address these capabilities that are needed during a time of disaster. It is through these lifelines that we are, that we believe that when a community is impacted, any of these lifelines, if any of them are down or impacted, that will have a huge impact on our community, on our residents. And so we want to address those areas. And so one, one way of addressing that, FEMA has introduced funding to support these lifelines in event of a, of a failure. What I've, one of the things that was highlighted in the 2019 National Preparedness Report, and even more so in the most recently released 2020 Preparedness Report, was some of the, the challenges that we face in terms of with disasters. I highlighted things such as outdated building codes or some properties are not aligned with the proper insurance. And unfortunately, we've seen this even during the flood. Some people had insurance, some people did not have insurance. Some people had insurance that couldn't cover the, the damage that was needed because it was not the right type of insurance. And so a lot of that is more of an educational type thing, but, but something that we wanted to engage. We talk about these newly developed community lifeline. It's a construct to say, if we can engage our local communities to address each of these lifelines for its gaps and needs, we probably would be in a better position to, to help address in times of disaster. There are four areas that we have, we, the county has focused on when it comes to mitigation that we would like to champion for, in parting with Bladensburg, to talk about building out these capabilities. Community resilience, long-term vulnerability reduction, risk disaster, and of course, the THARA. The THARA is what, basically what this office uses to help identify threats within our communities. These are, and I don't mean to, for you to, this is an eye chart. I don't mean to try to get you to strain your eyes to read it, but it's mine tend to, one, hopefully be given an opportunity to come back and go in details with this. But community resilience is key. How do we strengthen both our residents as well as our organizations, our local businesses within those, within our community to be in a position of preparedness in event of a disaster? Long-term recovery, that's, that's another huge area that we want to look at, talk about funding as well as disasters. One of the things in which we highlighted in our THARA, which is, and I apologize, the THARA is our Threat Hazard and Risk Assessment. We have done that by way of the state, identified areas that we consider to be hugely impacted by a disaster. Bladensburg comes up in the high area, particularly in certain, certain vulnerabilities or, and certain weather conditions. One of the things in which I wanted, if I can quickly go to, we've already identified what we consider our top threats within the county, be it flooding, severe storms, as Mayor James already mentioned, we're getting ready to go into the potential storm season again. But in knowing, in knowing this, what have we done? Or what can we do with Bladensburg to address or to head off some of these potential threats? One of the things in which I'd like to propose and would love the opportunity to work with the city on is, this is a new program that FEMA has rolled out, and it's called Organizations Preparing for Emergency Needs. I, I would like to try to take advantage of this to use as a case study or pilot project with Bladensburg to talk about, these are 10, we would build this out as a workshop, if you will, or a series of, to work through. But it is truly an opportunity to seek funding by way of a BRIC grant. If we can show that we're taking a whole community approach, and that is bringing our, not developing this at the county level, but getting down to the community level, working with our local authorities and their representatives and local businesses to talk about, how do we do this? And I think COVID-19 has really put us in a position where we really do need to have this discussion among our public and private sectors, that is bringing both parties together to, to work through this. And I would think we will be in a good position to, if we can show that we're taking a whole community, a public-private sector approach, this will help us not only build a case study, but it will also put us in position for, and I want to, I just want to be in full disclosure, to get a grant. I've been able to, have been successful in the past to be awarded two grants within the county doing similar projects. This is a new project here, and actually, Bladensburg, you're the first I'm coming to with this particular project. The project, once again, it is, it will be community-led, and no pressure intended, but Mayor James, you being, your office being one of the, the primary stakeholder to help facilitate the effort or to lead the effort. All funds or the grant will be totally committed, directed to the city to address the issues. And what are the issues? Those issues will not come up until we, as, those issues will be flushed out as we continue to meet over the series of working groups, if you will. Real quick, this, this information is totally available on, online in terms of all the materials. However, what is not available online, and you could go, that you can't get, and that is the face-to-face, I say the face-to-face, but the engagement of us working together, be it virtue for right now, but it is that interchange between the public and private sector coming together. Anyone can go online and glean the material, but what only this community can do is bring the key stakeholders to the table. And that's what it, that is what is needed when we talk about going forward to, to show that whole of community approach and to show buy-in. Lastly, and I, once again, I want to just quickly talk about what would this look like? We would go through a series of working, of what I call workshops together. And I say, we, in terms of OEM, will be behind the scenes trying to at least facilitate in the workshops. With the end state being, we would like to come up with what's called an Integrated Preparedness Plan. That Integrated Preparedness Plan, an IPP, is huge in the sense of being able to show we have a, a multi-year approach to our plan. Not everything is going to happen overnight, but it also sets us up for long-term funding. We will start off with the project as a proof of concept, but with the end state being, we will end up with an IPP at the local level. And an IPP is basically, it's showing there's a public-private sector plan in place. And I believe this will put, I'll say it like this, because this is the first time it will be done within the county, and I don't think, I haven't seen it so far in the state, we will be the first to come up with an IPP, and that I would think it will put us in a, in a better position for as being awarded a BRIC grant. Once again, I would not totally. Once again, I would not solely, I'm not solely saying that the BRIC grant is, would be the sole source of income, but I do know from, by building this out, we stand to receive, or Bladensburg stand to receive additional funding from outside resources as well, particularly the private sector. These are just some broad objectives in terms of what we will be engaged in, looking at the threat at the very local level in terms of how it's impact, how it impacts our Bladensburg community, and talk about capabilities. What capabilities we need to put in place going forward, looking back at what happened with our, with the flooding in September and looking ahead. And, and so with that being said, I do, I hope, I know that was pretty fast, but I at least wanted to, I wanted to put that out there, because we would love, by way of the Office of Emergency Management, would love the opportunity to work with the city in, in a case study with the intent of applying for a BRIC grant. That would, and I'm going to say it, I would say 90% of that will totally go to the city. What the other 10% is, I don't know at this point, but that would be the intent. And with that being said, that I'm definitely available for any questions or comments.
Wow, that was a lot of information, powerful information, Mr. Small, and great ideas. First, want to say I'm humbled that you thought of us for this pilot program slash case study, and I think I shared with you and others when you were out here, if we can learn from what happened and be a part of a, a program for municipalities that are small, older communities in the county, we'd be happy to do that. And I appreciate you remembering and coming back to us with an opportunity such as this. I'll open it up to comments. I'll start with Councilmember Mendoza. Any comments or questions?
I'm sorry, I was muted. No, I'm okay. I have no questions.
Great. And given the folks impacted in Councilmember Mendoza's area, Ward 1, I'm sure this is definitely meaningful to have something like this. And then also, I was thinking, as you were talking, Mr. Small, leads into, we've been trying to get to a place where we're fully staffed back up so we can get our, oh my gosh, I just, based on the name, our community, our cert team going again. And so I, as you were talking, I was definitely envisioning some tie-in there because as you said, our strategies have to be long-term. This isn't a one-time thing that we'd be looking to do. We want to really build something robust that can be carried on for years to come. Anyone on the staff want to comment? Officer Reinhardt or Mr. Tenelli, Mr. Hall?
I was going to say, does everybody love this guy or what? This is great.
Right. Exactly. I'm trying to contain my enthusiasm.
I really appreciate it. I mean, when we're going through our, you know, our problems, he was right there and, and, you know, him and his staff and his office were right there, ready to help and assist. I mean, bringing mail and voicemail, I mean, just seeing that ongoing list. That was huge. It's huge to our residents. I mean, people think there's a disconnect between, you know, town and then there's a big disconnect with the county. Well, there isn't, you know, they're, they're right there with us, helping and ready to help. So, and truly appreciative of that effort. And we can be on the, you know, on the forefront of this, on the initial BRIC grant, I mean, the case study, that'd be great.
And, and once again, no, no pressure intended, but I, I've, I've been fortunate to, to move around to various, various regions throughout the country. And FEMA Region 3 is my last region, in which I introduced a similar project to one of our cities here, and we end up winning in the 2019 Community Resilience Award. Totally different project, but it was something that was solely based off of what the local community, I, I, I'll be honest, I went straight to the mayor's office because it's going to take that level of authority and, and, and I'll just say it like this. When you can show that you have that type of leadership behind you, communities will get involved. And so I don't say that to say that we'll get a grant, but I believe you, we will get a grant if we can show that whole community approach. So I thank you once again for the opportunity.
Yes. And then Mr. Small, I know a couple of our colleagues couldn't be here tonight due to other commitments, and you did hint at this, so I'm going to raise it. We may have to ask you to come back and do a part two. I took some notes, but I think our team, even if it's a separate meeting, we, it just makes sense for them to hear it directly from you so we can get buy-in from the whole council to proceed. And if there's paperwork involved where we need to sign something, you know, we're on the same page with moving forward. But as you heard, I mean, we're, we're very pleased and grateful for the opportunity and want to make this work. So again, thank you for taking the time to be here and share all the great updates. And then I believe it may have been after the car accident with one of our condo buildings where we chatted and just mentioned the desire to really do some more community education around emergency preparedness. And so I don't know if it may make sense to build that into this plan or maybe just do something with weather changes, seasonal changes coming up, but just wanted to put that on the table, even if it's just a virtual meeting like this with residents where you're sharing tips because spring is coming and these are the typical natural disasters or storms that we face. This is how to be prepared, providing any sort of resources. Still want to put that out there because I just feel like the, the more we can educate our residents and especially seeing the good showing of people on here, watching, people watching on the Facebook page, people will share the information so we can get it out and just help the community to be safer, to be more prepared for emergencies.
Well, Mayor James, my final comment, I would say thank you once again for this opportunity. I would say that I think you are spot on with, OEM has not announced it yet, but we will be, be starting a webinar series that's geared to the community at large for its preparedness. So I think that is an opportunity to, to do that educational outreach. And, and so I look forward to, as that rolls out more, providing more information.
Yes, glad it's in the works. Thank you so much, Mr. Small. Have a great evening and we'll be back in touch soon.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you, Councilman, and your group.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Mason, during the work session, there's no public comment. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. It's okay. No worries. All right. Thank you, Mr. Small.
Thank you.
So at this time, we will move to the next item, which is the MML Summer Conference. And I do understand that this year, the quantity of attendees in person is limited because of the pandemic. I think it's the number 400, I'm trying to remember. So once the first 400 people are registered, they will shut off in-person registrations, but you will have the opportunity to attend virtually. And I know that I saw messages from two councilmembers earlier today, Councilmember Blunt and Lundie with interest. I think Blunt may have wanted to be in-person, Lundie virtual, but again, we'll have to bring this back for a vote from the council since it does involve finances, but just wanted to put that out there. Were there any staff members who wanted to attend on the virtual? I feel like you all are Academy of Excellence graduates at this point, but I could be wrong.
If there's new content, you know, if there's new classes, it looks like half of the program, you know, it's, you know, geared for new public officials that turn over every few years, couple of years. So if there's new content, yes, I mean, it's, but just talking about this, coming back to it, the registration period closes for the first round on March 26th. So we need to, I don't know if this is a public vote that has to happen on who go, on who's going, is that financial business or not? Or conference registration? I don't know, but we just have to register within the next couple of weeks.
And normally, we would, if we were in person, go around the table, who's going and so, and at least so our residents could observe and see who's planning to attend and whatnot. So Mrs. Ferguson, in this situation, because the conference registration fee is part of professional development, it is budgeted, but would we need to come back for a formal vote? As I mentioned, there's two team members who've already expressed interest. We just usually have a practice of making it public at the work session and confirming who's going, who's going to stay back on the home office front and keep things operating. But I, I don't believe we've actually taken a formal vote. It's just more of a consensus on who's doing what.
No, you already have it budgeted for that purpose. So you wouldn't need another vote.
Okay, great. Thank you. So again, just it, just to have the public aware, we've got to so far. And then I would probably opt to do virtual as well. All right, next up, we have Mr. Tenelli with the mayor and council budget priorities. Did you want to table that for the next meeting?
I think it's, I mean, of, of course, you and Councilmember Mendoza can weigh in, but a couple of things, it'd be better with a full discussion, but we're already into the March meeting. It'd be, you know, the idea was to, you know, to really discuss it here because I got to bring back a draft next meeting. And I really need the mayor and council input. I mean, I know what 90% of our budget is, you know, it's staffing. We got to keep the lights on, we got to pay for, you know, insurances. But, you know, if there's any, you know, priorities, you know, I really want to hear from the mayor and council. So this isn't like a staff-generated budget and, you know, one, you know, mayor and council buy-in, obviously. Because, you know, and, and that's the community input part as well, too. And, you know, so I, I guess we will have to table it. I mean, I could bring a draft and we have budget work sessions. I think it is on the next item, we have a few budget calendar options, which I don't think we can adopt tonight anyway. But either way, the process starts next mayor and council meeting in April, the second Monday in April with a draft to start. Just to get something on paper so we can move into the budget work sessions. And then from there, I can hear it, you know, after the count, during, during next month's work session as well. So, and I can make changes.
Yep, that makes sense. And then in terms of scheduling things, do you want to just gather availability? Can't talk, availability via email so we can, if you send us what options, you know, you think could work schedule-wise, we just give back to you so we can firm that up and then post it so our residents can be aware since we break them up, you know?
For the budget calendar?
Yeah, for the actual calendar.
And so, and I think that's okay to do. I mean, that's just scheduling. I mean, that's not a, I mean, we're not doing any business. I mean, if, if we shared dates internally to see what works for budget work sessions.
Certainly.
Okay.
That's just generally something you send around.
Okay, so.
Perfect. Okay, so hopefully we can get that going in the next few weeks. I just feel bad when it gets rushed at the end and you have to stack so many meetings close together. So the sooner we can get ahead of it, the better. I do know one thing I want to raise to the, my colleagues, but again, I'll save it for when we get into the full discussion with the team. And then the last item under new business is, as you all know, Bladensburg is a sustainable community under Sustainable Maryland's program. That's run through the University of Maryland. And this is their 10-year anniversary. And so I'm on the executive committee. And one of the ideas that we had was to encourage greater sustainability in more communities across the state as well as to highlight the activities that are sustainable and greening initiatives of the municipalities that we tie in the 10-year anniversary with Earth Day. So that is in the works. Probably later this week, there'll be some takeaways in terms of actions that we can do as a community leading up to Earth Day. So I was going to share that because I know Councilmember Lundie had indicated wanting to move that green team forward and think this could be a great opportunity for us to do something. And also because we're coming out of winter, going into spring and going around the community, you just see where there are certain pockets where trash has accumulated over the winter months, wind blows things up in woods and you don't notice it until, you know, after we're coming out of the winter, snow's gone now. It's highly more, highly visible to us. So definitely want us to be giving some thought to how we can have a couple of cleanup efforts throughout the month of April in conjunction with Earth Day. So just more of a heads up at this point. Any questions or comments there from the staff or council? Okay. And then I believe there may have been some confusion. So Ms. Rigby may be planning to get on the 7:00 PM meeting. So Mr. Tenelli, I know I had that down here for the work session, but we'll just plug her in when she's able to rejoin us for the actual council meeting. But from the staff.
We can do that after public comment, Mayor.
Okay, just slide her in, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. But any further questions from the team? I did just want to mention, we, we do understand that you all, particularly Mr. Hall and Officer Reinhardt, have been a huge help with dealing with 769C and really doing what you can to get that water moving and so forth. So I do believe it will be helpful just hearing from Ms. Rigby or someone from her team for the longer-term solutions. But I don't want it to go unnoticed because I have seen comments from residents who are bringing us pictures and things like that. But you all have been dealing with this for years and trying to do patchwork, dig another ditch to help drain some of that water where possible to eliminate the freezing on the road surfaces when temperatures drop. So I definitely want to acknowledge the efforts that have been done and, you know, going above and beyond to try to keep folks safe. So with that, that brings us to the end of the work session agenda. And so we have a bit of time before the seven o'clock meeting, so I will call it unless Mr. Councilmember Mendoza has anything else.
Will we just be back?
Yeah, so we'll be back at seven. Yeah. All right. Thanks, everybody, for joining. We'll see you back at seven.